...reports, Eric.
Eric Vaughn, Chair of the Municipal Building Committee, 14 Lot Farm Way. The Municipal Building Committee report is as follows. We're making progress with the update of the feasibility report. We have some draft sketches of site plans for the options that I noted last for a selectmen meeting in which we're showing the whole entire site of Morgan Ave, including the fire. Not that they're included in our proposal, but we're trying to think ahead and also provide some costs. And these are being edited by the architect as we speak. Hopefully, we'll have them in short time, within a week, and then we'll hopefully within two or three weeks, or as soon as possible, have a revised feasibility report with site plans, conceptual building plans, and at the same time, we will take these plans and send them out for a third-party cost estimate. When that comes back, the Municipal Building Committee will reassemble our recommendation to the Board of Selectmen where we'll outline the information from the feasibility study. We'll add the soft costs, the construction costs, and present that back to you. Then we hope to engage anybody and everybody in town on why and what is being proposed, what the value is, what the cost is, and what the process is. So, within a couple of weeks, we'll have some information and documentation to share, and then it's time to have some of those joint meetings like we did previously, schedule some public workshops, get people that are interested in understanding the issue so that they can then go talk to other people in town, and we can make everybody aware of what the new proposal is and why.
All right.
Thank you, Eric.
So, there was an article in the paper two days ago. Rowley is almost following the same track that we're doing. They have done a feasibility report. They are combining their police and their fire services. Their project is $11 million. Their square footage is fairly close. Their -- and sorry, I didn't have time to read the exact numbers, but police station of 8,909 square feet. We're proposing 9,000 square feet. Fire station of 14,000 square feet. We were previously proposing slightly less than that, and their total project costs, including soft costs, construction costs, $11,138,750. We were $11,465,000. So, that just gives a baseline and a comparison for another town. Very similar facility, very same cost that was previously presented for the public safety building. I just hope that gives people confidence of what we've been doing is in the right vein in order of magnitude. Obviously, the proposal here is slightly different with a police station town hall, but we'll use the same good sense and the same metrics and the same thought process we did last time to add value and be able to present that back to the residents. There we go.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you very much. Tracy, you don't have a report tonight? No, right?
I have my report in an executive session this evening.
Right, that's right. New business? Is there any? Alan, no, yes?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Page two.
Okay. Meaning page two of this. Yeah, all right, good. I know that. How do I pronounce that? Christopher Horan?
Horan.
Horan? Of 11 Lunt Street has a submission of a special permit application for the construction located at 6 Central Street, Byfield Assessors Map, 14 Lot 2, located in the Water Supply Protection Overlay District. And we're going to need when -- are you -- is this going to be a presentation yet? Tell us what's going on.
No, just a submission tonight?
All right, because we need to vote to accept the special permit so you can have a public hearing. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
And I can speak to some of that.
Okay, good. All right. Would you like to tell us a little bit about what it is?
Basically, it's the old Methodist Church in Byfield Village.
Okay.
And it's been vacant since November 2014, and I'm proposing to convert it to four townhouse condominiums. And what you have there is renderings of the church street and central street proposal, landscape plan, elevations, floor plans, site plan. We need three approvals. One from you guys because it's in the water overlay district. We need a special permit for multifamily, up to four units. It's an allowable use in the area, but need a special permit, and also site review.
From the planning board, correct?
All from the planning board, yes. The latter, too. Yep.
Okay, so, as I understand it, then let's make a motion, and then if there's any discussion from my board, Martha, do you want to fill in a little bit?
Well, just a couple of things. As Chris said, it does need three approvals. One from you and two from the planning board. And what we've done in the past in these similar situations is to try to coordinate a joint meeting to help expedite the process for the applicant, and so he doesn't have to come twice and all of that. So, when you get to it, I do have a suggestion on a date if it works for you all.
Okay.
And just to let you know, I have -- Chris gave me a draft of the application last week. I did go through it, had some comments which he has picked up and included in the submission that you're getting tonight, and that will be sent out to, you know, the relevant boards and committees for review and comment prior to the public hearing.
And one quick question, just for kicks. There'll have to be a special permit from the planning board because the use is more than two, more than three?
Right. Under our zoning, multifamily, up to four, requires a special permit from the planning board.
And that triggers by that site plan review?
And site plan review is triggered by something else. In this case, it's --
Size?
I thought it was more than 1,000 square feet.
Right, it's more than 1,000 square feet of additional --
I was trying to get you out of site plan review.
Yeah, no, we --
Be on the planning board.
Right, yeah, no, we --
Martha, what's that zoned?
It's in the Byfield Village District. Byfield Business District.
Okay, all right, all right.
Yeah, which allows the multifamily. We rezoned that a few years ago to allow multifamily, so by special permit.
That's right. I remember that now.
And what is the date that you're looking, or dates that you're looking for?
Well, generally, what we've tried to do is to coordinate it so it either falls on a selectmen's meeting night or a planning board meeting night. I did, in anticipation of all of this, I did discuss it with the board last week, and if it works for you all, the board would like to suggest that the joint hearing happen on a selectmen's meeting night of March 8th. That will give enough time. Chris is going to submit to the planning board next week, and that will then give us enough time to get the notice in the newspaper. It needs to be noticed twice, at least two weeks ahead.
And did you have our calendar in front? Are we okay? Any other things? No joint meetings? Okay. Were you asking that to make a motion?
I was getting ready to do that.
That was good today.
I move that we vote to accept the special permit application and set a public hearing date for March 8th at 7:15.
Second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good seeing you.
Good to see you again. Thanks.
Peter, you're here.
Yes.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
Peter's here to review and approve the current Town of Newbury regulations for the shellfish industry and harvesting of seaworms, eels, and crabs, October 1st, 2016, to March 31st, 2017, in preparation for February 1st, 2016, distribution of basically the new licenses. When I kind of -- thanks, Eric. When I kind of looked at -- is there anything new in there?
I'm Peter Pitino, Chairman of the fish commission.
Yeah.
The only thing is what we presented to you before about the out-of-state licenses. They will no longer be getting a season-long license. They'll now be getting a daily license, and it's just to stop people that have been kind of circumventing the rules and regulations. They've been harvesting clams commercially on a season license. They live out of state, and there's been a pretty good crew that have been coming down onto the refuge, walking out. It's been all legal, but they're not eating the clams that they're digging.
Is that the town's discretion or the state's discretion?
As far as the change?
Yeah.
It's the town. We've put this in. We inherited these diggers from Ipswich. They've changed their regulations to stop these people from digging in their town. So, we inherited them a number of years back. And then when we didn't really have a constable, they abused it. So, they buy a season license. They might dig five days a week or six days if it was open. Nobody was checking them. Now Paul's out there, and he's been able to hold them to three days a week. But again, they're not digging for their personal consumption or use. They're actually selling. And I know that the refuge -- there was a gentleman that works for the refuge that called the New Hampshire Environmental Police, and they followed these guys one day, but they weren't able to catch them in the act of selling. So, we're hoping to discourage them or at least have the town make more money if they're out there at $22 a day and three days a week. And that's the three days a week is what everybody, every non-commercial license holder gets, and $22 a day is what a Massachusetts resident would pay for a daily license. The only thing we're stopping them from is getting a season-long license, and that's the biggest change. We added periwinkles because we got a request for information on the commercial harvest of, and I called DMF, and they said that they treat it open and closing as like clams and no size limit or amount limit. And then I think I --
Peter, where are they -- where is there another open -- where are they doing a lot, down the Cape?
No, I heard Maine. Jeff told me that a girl came in and sold him 300 pounds of periwinkles. So, they're open and closed as clams are, so that -- and then there's no limit, and I don't know if anybody will be gathering them or not, but because we got the --
They're on there now.
We got the request, we put it in.
And how have things moved with the state as far as the contaminated beds?
Funny you should ask. I really --
Do you want to chair?
I don't want to get into it, honest. It's very frustrating. It's --
Still in process.
I'll be surprised if we're open when we should be.
This year.
We're giving it a shot. I think I know that Jeff's done all he can. I know I've done all I can. I contacted DMF this week. I also contacted Senator Tarr. Jeff did, too, to back me up in both cases, and I don't know. I don't know that we're any closer, I'm sorry to say. But I have spoken to Devon Winkler, who is a biologist who is in charge of taking water samples in hopes of opening upriver in the Parker River because they promised in August that they would start to do that. And she told me that she's reviewed historical data, and she would start taking water tests the next time she took tests, but she really didn't tell me how long that would take before they would open. I contacted Parker River Clean Water Association because they've tested for years.
Extensively, yeah.
And I'm going to try and get their results, keep them down here with the state's results. I asked Devon if she wanted me to forward those results to her, but she really wasn't interested in them, so that's where we stand on that, and these are just the new regs. I think the only other change was eels. We added the state regulation that the eel has to be nine inches or greater to be taken. And again, that's -- we've gotten some -- we have two commercial eel permits sold last year, and I had other people asking me questions about it for this year, so that may be something that gets a little busier. That's about it.
So, can we have a motion to accept as presented, and maybe we'll have discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion for Peter? Any other questions?
I hope things come through for you. I know you're doing a lot of work on this.
Yeah, thank you.
Do they have those, some special eels up in?
Glass eels.
Yeah, do they have them in?
It's illegal to take -- they probably do, and I've heard stories that they're being poached by people from Maine that are coming down because it's a huge amount of money.
Yeah, in Japan or something?
Yeah, they sell them, but I mean, they get a huge amount for harvesting them. I think it's legal in Maine, but -- and I've heard that people have poached in the Parker River and that the EPOs have been on the lookout for it, but it's illegal en masse. It's a nine-inch limit, so the glass eel won't be harvested.
So, they do have them here in the Parker River?
Yes, as far as I -- if they're poaching them, they must have them.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Peter.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your work.
Motion to open the public hearing?
Uh-huh. There we are, all right. We are going to make a motion to enter in to a public hearing that was to occur at 7:15 PM, and it is going to be -- do you have anything to read or you want me to read it? I'll read it. It's in accordance, and you can make the motion. It's in accordance with the provision of Mass. General Law, Chapter 61A, and it's a notice of intent to enclose on 255 High Road, Newbury, Mass., Assessors Map, R. 27, Lot 64, for other than agricultural uses specifically for residential use. I entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open?
Second.
You know, that being said, we had 121 days to execute summary leave from 61A so that the owner is here tonight, too, to be able to purchase land on 255 High Road. We did have a letter, and Greenbelt's not present tonight, I don't think?
No.
We did have a letter earlier from Greenbelt, and they were going to ask us to wait. Is that correct as we read that?
They wanted you to assign your right of first refusal to them initially.
They wanted us to wait, right, Martha, till the next meeting?
For financing?
Before we did that because they were in the process of putting some stuff together?
Right.
Now, we have been notified that they no longer have that intention to do that. So, and Martha might be able to explain this a little better if I've misinformed the process, but are we now where we have no people that are entertaining any other ideas, but will we be making motions maybe tonight to move this forward by making a motion to not exercise the right of first refusal and not sign the rights to a nonprofit? Go ahead.
I may turn to Town Council for this as well.
You may, yeah.
Because I don't know if you actually need to take an active vote on each of those options to not exercise your right and not to assign, but to --
I think we have to make a motion on both, but I think the board's got to decide if -- because we still have time to make that motion if we so desire it, right?
I believe you had until February 23rd to make a final decision.
So, tonight, I think as a board, we have to decide where there is no one else in the wings. Do we want to expedite this for the owner of the property so he can sell the property and move forward, or would we for any reason want to not make those two motions tonight? So, just for the sake of discussion, do you want to -- and Ginny, correct me if I'm wrong. Should we have Damon or Chuck read these two motions and then discuss them and decide what we want to do, or can we have open discussion before we make the motion?
I would have open discussion to decide whether, yeah.
All right. So, that being said, listen to me, listen to them, Martha. Do I have any questions from the board? And then I'll entertain questions from the audience.
Well, the only question I have is for the Historic Commission because their letter said they were going to talk more when they were here at the meeting, and so I wanted to see what they had to say.
And there's everyone here tonight, too, so I don't mind.
Yeah, I'd rather have more input first than discuss.
Chuck, do you have anything else before that?
Oh, ready to vote.
All right, so if Damon --
I'd like to hear what they say.
Yeah, if Damon would like. Channing, you want to speak first?
I'm very brief.
Yep.
Channing Howard, Chairman of the Newbury Historical Commission. Our concerns with the preservation of the existing barn on the property. I'm trying to stand by the purchasers that they do plan on maintaining the barn and keeping the barn. We did ask questions about changes as far as windows and exterior to keep it in context with the original barn itself. We have not had time to do any more research than that, but basically keeping the barn as close to original as possible and as tasteful as possible is what our main concern is at this point.
All right. Martha, the planning board had written a letter, too. Do you want to kind of follow up on where you guys are now?
Right, the planning board had looked at it, you know, at all three options, and made a determination that it didn't see any beneficial use for the town to exercise its right of first refusal. But knowing that there was agricultural value to the property and the fact that it abuts land owned by the trustees of reservations as well as the wildlife refuge, it did see benefit in assigning the right to a conservation organization if there was one that was interested in purchasing the property. And if not, the conclusion was to, you know, support the sale going through. And as we now know, there is no conservation organization, so it would be the third.
All right.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Has the trustees or the refuge been approached?
The trustees did weigh in. They're not in a position to make that purchase at this time, and I believe the refuge was notified, but as far as I know, they did not respond in any way, so I think we can only assume that they're not interested.
Thanks, Martha.
Thank you.
Conservation Commission wrote a letter saying they basically were not interested at this. They didn't see that it held that type of interest. Steve, Border Health and Agricultural Commission.
Border Health.
Okay. All right. So, that being said, I find, at least for myself, that it's hard not to vote the two motions that we discussed earlier because there was no one interested in that piece of property at that time, and it seems not the correct thing to do to hold a sale up when there's no reason that we can legally hold the sale up. Is that right, Ginny?
Yeah, I mean, it seems like you've exhausted all potential assignees.
All right, so.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
The Historical Commission, will you be -- are you -- I'm sorry if I misunderstood you. Are you satisfied with your conversations with the potential buyer, or are you going to have additional items that he should be aware of?
We have no control over -- the only control we have at Oprah is demolition, so we have no architectural control. We have no control to restoration. All we do is give our opinion, what we'd like to see, but it is no -- the demolition delay by law is the only law we have, so that is, that's the only thing we have.
And it's my understanding.
There's no discussion of any demolition.
Yeah.
So, that is not in the process.
Okay.
Two motions. We'll take them one at a time. Damon, two motions.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
I move that the board vote not to exercise its right of first refusal to purchase the property located at 255 High Road, Newbury, Mass., Assessors Map, R. 27, Lot 64. You want me to do both at once?
Nope, go ahead.
Second the motion.
Any discussion on the first motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move the board vote not to assign its right to a nonprofit conservation organization or to the Commonwealth or any of its political subdivisions for the property located at 225 High Road, Newbury, Mass., Assessors Map, R. 27, Lot 64.
Second the motion.
Is there any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
All right.
I move to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any discussion?
Aye.
All those in favor? Aye.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck.
We have now appointment of election workers for 2016 elections from February 1st, 2016, until 12:31, 2016. I guess I will read the names. Ellen, correct me if I read them wrong, and if we have any hold on anyone for any reason, which we usually do in a point like this. Otherwise, we make a motion to accept the appointment of the election workers.
I have a question. Do you want me to ask now, or do you want me to ask after we?
No, is this according to this?
It's about the appointment of election workers.
Go ahead.
What are these people going to do?
Help with the election.
How so?
I'm teasing you.
No.
This is done -- and help me if Ellen or Tracy, this is by the request of town clerk, right?
Correct.
And town clerk asks for this depth of people in case people are out of town sick or anything else, and we have two voting locations. And they help in --
Okay, so these are the --
They work at the polls.
They actually work at the polls.
They work at the polls.
Because we've had issues in the past with, lack of a better word, the right to exercise your vote as you see fit, and I really do not, I really would like to see what the guidance is that we're going to give this group of folks before the election takes place and what their roles are, because I know a couple people here. I know Paul Darbitz and James Cunningham. They're also constables, so I don't know if that's, if they have to be appointed to be election workers, and that's because that's their role as a constable to make sure that we have a free and clean election. I mean, so that's all. I'm just throwing it out there.
Oh, it's good, and I think they probably need to be elected to stand at the pole in their capacity, so.
Yes, they do.
To be there.
Is there anyone else that has a question, and then I'll ask for -- I'll read the list. You all right? I'm just going to try last names. Burke, Callahan, Cohen, Kobe Jr., Cunningham, Darbitz, Davis, Demarest, Goldthorpe, Hathaway, Hickey, Johnson, Kaminsky, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Coslow, Kaminsky, Coslow, Litteris.
Oh, she's here twice.
Yeah, twice, yeah.
Say it again.
Wendy Kaminsky's on here twice.
So is Marlene.
Oh.
Marlene is as well.
I thought they were sisters. I didn't read that. All right. No double votes. Did I -- McDonald, McCall, Muse, Nice, Reardon, Reardon? That is an end of the page. Rock, Rogers, Thurlow, Webb, and West.
You missed Litteris.
Say it again.
You missed Terry Litteris.
No, I did say it, but you --
Okay, I'm sorry.
You might have not heard it.
Motion.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approval.
Second.
Is there any discussion about any of the names? Hearing none and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We need to review and approve and sign 1916 business license renewals.
2016.
That what they say?
19.
Oh, pretty good, huh? I told you I was tired tonight watching. As follows. All American Automotive, Surf Land, Bait and Tackle, Glant Pool and Spa. Is there a motion to approve all?
Motion to approve all. David's Dental.
Oh, excuse me. Parker River Dental, three can't wait. Go ahead.
My dentist.
Motion to approve all?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Old Business. Jen?
No.
Oh. So, all right. Citizens Concerns.
No fans?
Say it again. Correspondents. We have not -- Review of Minutes, January 12, 2016, JR is not here. Four of us are here, and I believe all four were at that meeting. Have we all read those minutes?
Yes.
Motion to approve as well.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Warrants. Do we have a motion to sign warrants? Do we have warrants?
Yes. Motion to sign warrants?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
While we're getting ready to sign those warrants, do we have any meeting updates?
JR is here.
Meeting update is JR is here.
Sorry.
No, we understand. Emergency at the farm. Then we'll sign some warrants, do we have them handy, Ellen? We do have executive session at 8:30.
We have to wait till 8:30?
We can go into executive before that and wait for the other person to come at that time that was, she's not here, right?
No.
Okay, so, but we can go into executive session.
Okay.
Why don't we sign the warrants first?
All right.
And then, we have someone that is coming later for executive session.
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah.
You can carry that with you.
It works.
We'll make it, no, we'll sign the warrants first.
Yeah. Oh, okay, yeah. Bye-bye. Okay. Yeah, oh, there you go.
Oh.
That was that. This...
See you, Channing.